So you guys talked about some dates?
Yes.
He said May 8th, right?
Or May 8th.
May 8th, okay. I know, that's the next thing I was gonna...
No, everybody gets to sit up here for, there'll be a reason.
What's that?
Just go with the flow. Everybody just go with the flow.
I always do.
Carl is, Carl is taking, making a left turn and everybody's gotta go along with it.
Albuquerque?
I know you have. Are we ready? Are you ready?
We're ready.
David, are we ready?
Yeah.
I didn't turn my computer over.
Cause you, you're here just enough to say hi.
Yes, exactly.
Alright. Well, but the point is, look, I would call Rob and scream at him.
Ron?
Pison.
Oh, Rob.
Rob.
Robert.
Robert. Are we ready? You had us all ready and then he's here?
Is it like Alexa? Can we, can we just say dim the lights?
Make the camera waggle?
There you go, he gave us the sign.
There you go.
Alright, we ready? Alright, good evening everyone, welcome to the Hillsborough Township Planning Board Meeting of April 3rd, 2025. Please join me in salute to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, otherwise known as Sunshine Law. Notice the 2025 annual meeting schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, the township clerk posted on township's website, and available here at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex. In addition, application document, documents and plans have been made available on the Township Civic Clerk website at least 10 days in advance of this evening's meeting. Complete application files are available in the Planning and Zoning Department for inspection in accordance with the public meeting notice. That may have a roll call of board members and also board and township professionals, please.
Vice Chair Pison, Mr. Wagner, Mrs. Vartali are absent. Mr. Flag?
Here.
Mr. Radowitz?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Devon?
Here.
Mr. Smith? Committeeman LaPonte?
Present.
Mayor Chigarelli?
Here.
Sheriff Saraji?
Here.
Mr. Coys?
Present.
Mr. Ball is, excuse me, Ms. Ball is absent. Mr. Bernstein?
Maybe.
Mr. Mayhew?
Here.
And myself and the videographer are here.
Okay, welcome everyone. If the board will indulge me, I'm looking to take things out of order this evening because, and you'll find out why in a moment, so I wanna go right, would like to go right to this evening's application of Homestead Road LLC. And come on up, two objectors, you got two, we got two seats. Yeah, no one fights for one because not gonna be sitting here for long. Okay, so again, a home road LLC file number 21-PB-25-MSPV with the time of decision of April 30th of this year. And you guys can introduce yourselves.
Good evening Chairman, members of the board, Craig Giannetti of the law firm, Dave Pitney, on behalf of the applicant Homestead Road LLC.
Good evening, Mike Pissaro, Policy Director for the Watershed Institute, objector number one.
John Landhand, objector number four.
Scott Gross, objector number two.
Lori Cleveland from the Sowerland Conservancy.
Okay, welcome everyone, and before we get started, I'm gonna turn over to Mr. Bernstein.
Well, I'm not here, so...
Oh, you're here, for this part.
I might be, I wasn't sure. Mr. Chairman, it has, for the board's edification, six members of the board are eligible to participate in this hearing, as this has gone on for the duration it has. Unfortunately, two of those members are not here this evening. While it looks like we have a full group, we do, but for purposes of the Homestead Road hearing, we became aware early this afternoon that two of the member, at least one of the member we thought was going to be here in fact is not. We advised Mr. Giannetti's office, we advised the objectors. It has come to our, what would normally happen based on that is it would come to next week's meeting, which we have, but we have come to the understanding, and Mr. Giannetti will place his own comments, that he and his witness are both unavailable next week, and therefore we have to look for scheduling another meeting and an extension on the time of decision rule, because we are not gonna get this done by the end of April. So...
Yes, that is correct, and if you recall from last meeting when we sent, set this date, as we typically request, we typically request for two dates, and we talked about April 10th, but I advised I was gonna be unavailable, and I also learned that our witness would be unavailable. We were prepared to go this evening and finish the public questioning of our traffic expert. So I believe the date that was mentioned previously was May 8th, if that date is available, and then would also inquire if there's a second meeting.
May 8th.
Second meeting, ladies and gentlemen, will probably be in June because the board has a remand from Judge Menon on another application that is taking priority over your application.
I saw, I saw him today in court.
You got him my week. So we're probably looking at one of the meetings in June, we will have to get back to Mr. Giannetti before the 8th, as to when that will be, because we are juggling not only that application, but the Housing Element Fair Share Plan that we have to get done by the end of June, and whatever other matters. So I would ask that Mr. Giannetti graciously grant a time of decision through June the 30th, and that we set down another meeting, and by the way, this is gonna have to be basically on the record because there are insufficient members of the board in order to carry it. So it would be carried until, unless anyone has any objection, carried until May 8th, 2025 at 7:00 PM, or as soon thereafter if the matter may be heard. Time of decision is being carried until June.
What I'd like to do is...
You wanna do May 31st?
May 30th or 31st, whatever.
31st, and we'll look at it where we are?
Correct.
I do have a housekeeping issue that council was supposed to bring up, but I guess I will.
Well, I was gonna bring that up now.
Well, bring it up.
Okay. So as the board may recall at the last meeting, we finished the direct examination of our rebuttal witness for traffic, we completed our rebuttal witness for civil engineering, the objectors were instructed if they were going to have any further rebuttal of the rebuttal, that the reports were gonna be due 10 days prior for this meeting. And as I mentioned, we were prepared to go this evening and finish the small amount of public questioning that was available, and then was expecting that the objectors would, if they had anything to present, would be presenting. They did not submit the report, and for that, we say, we believe they should be foreclosed, you know, from trying to use this adjournment through no fault of the applicant to try and get a second bite at the apple.
I would concur, Mr. Chairman.
Board members, who's eligible? Okay.
Well, there's nothing really...
Doesn't say agree, I agree.
For purposes of the record, and this is for the objectors, Mr. Dean, as we'll be back here, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Giannetti on the 8th of May?
Correct.
He is, you're finished with his direct testimony, correct?
Yes, I reserve any redirect depending upon what comes out in the rest of public questioning.
I believe Mr. Pizzano had questioned him, but memories are fading since it was...
I don't believe I had any questions for Mr. Dean.
Well, I believe, I don't think, I think you were the last one, and that's where we sort of... In public comment, thank you, Mr. Dean. So basically, it's public comment on Mr. Dean, then potential rebuttal. You're done?
Redirect.
Redirect, pardon me, you're done with rebuttal?
Correct.
Are you planning on, any of you calling rebuttal witnesses without a report?
Let me just seek a clarification. The applicant is not calling any additional witnesses. Mr. Ford's testimony is done, Mr. Dean's testimony is done, that is it at this point?
So yes, our rebuttal testimony is done. We will respond in some form or fashion to the review letters we received. We're still going through it, we believe a lot of the stuff they raised, our position has been addressed in testimony, and we'll highlight that. They may not agree with it, or they may not think it's satisfactory, but it's our position was addressed, but we'll, we'll be responding to that. But it's not our expectation that we will call them as witnesses unless the board specifically wants to hear from them.
I was just gonna say, I mean, to the extent there's no additional testimony from the applicant's experts with additional information, I have no intention of calling in, you know, Dr. Emerson back. If plans change, i.e. the site plan, the stormwater plans change as a result of the review letters, then I do wanna reserve the right to do so if necessary, and I will use if necessary, not.
Mr. Giannetti, you have any idea when you're gonna have a response to Mr. Mayhew and Mr. Coys's reports?
I would suspect in the next two weeks. And I, there's, I'll confirm with them, but I don't expect any planned revisions or revisions to the Stormwater Management Report.
If you, if you, today is the 3rd, if you provide the material by the 20th of April, which is the Friday after, by 21st of April, which is the Fri, Monday after Easter, we'll post it on Civic Clerk. If any of the objectors plan on calling a witness, or, because there'll be no reports, calling a witness, we would ask that you advise us 10 days in advance of May the 8th, copy Mr. Giannetti's office, so he is aware and will know where we are. Assuming no changes in anything and the public is done questioning Mr. Dean, then it will be public comment on the overall application, followed by the closing presentations by the objectors, and in the rare moments in life, Mr. Giannetti will get the last word. And then it will be up to the board on deliberation, and I suspect that will be where the next excitement will start.
Sounds good.
All assuming we get five people. So... Any other questions from the objectors and/or applicant's council?
Yeah, just, can we just circle back to the calendar for a minute? So we have May 8th, if we're looking at the calendar for a second meeting?
You have May 8th for what would have been tonight?
I understand, but we had May 8th, right, for the next meeting? And then if we're talking about a blocking for a second meeting, possible meeting, if I heard correctly, you were gonna get back, and all I wanted to say for the record, for, Mr. Pissaro and I are not here on May, not available on May 15th, the following week, so I just wanna block.
You're saying there is the May 15th?
I don't think we'll be lucky enough to get May 8th.
First of all, May 15th is...
I just wanna make sure we don't start filling the calendars.
May 15th is not a board night. Secondly, the board is not going to deal with this application beyond May 8th in May. We're under another constraint from the court.
I get it, but since we keep filling in the calendar, I just wanted to give courtesy of...
It would most likely be June 5th or June 12th would be the next, depending on where we're at, but that's where you shouldn't participate.
And where we're also at in terms of other items. But we will have a better idea by May 8th, if not before. If there's a date that we have in mind before the 8th, we will circulate to everyone. But remember, it's also a count issue. Anything else, gentlemen?
Appreciate it.
Okay. So I believe Mr. Bernstein outlined a motion to carry.
Well, there's no motion, you do not have enough people to make a motion or a second.
Well, that, that, that's true. Fair point.
So the parties have agreed on the record to all of this.
Yes, and maybe just one more announcement for the public of it being carried to that date would be appreciated.
This, this application will be carried until Thursday, May 8th, 2025, at 7:00 PM, or as soon thereafter as the matter may be heard, in this room, without further notice.
Thank you.
Time of decision till May 31st.
Thank you.
So with that, everyone that was interested in the application is free to go.
Oh, one last item, for pure procedure, I did receive a signed document from the mayor indicating that an absent member, he has reviewed the transcript from the May 13th, March 13th meeting, and he will be eligible to, to participate when the meeting recommences in May, hopefully.
Alright, so now we're gonna return to our normal scheduled order of business.
Normal scheduled program. You wanna wait a couple of minutes?
Yeah. Okay. You say that. You say that. Okay, the, the crowd has cleared. We do still have people that are interested in seeing what we're doing. Okay, so we're moving back up to the top. We do not have meeting minutes for consideration, we do have two resolutions for consideration. First up is Somerset County... Okay, the, the crowd has cleared. We do still have people there interested in seeing what we're doing. Okay, so we're moving back up to the top. We do not have meeting minutes for consideration. We do have two resolutions for consideration. First up is Somerset County Senior Wellness Center, the pavilion, with a file number of 25-PB-01-INF. Who's...
Excuse me. Eligible members are Mr. Flag, Mr. Radowitz, Ms. Smith, Mr. Deb, and the chair.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any comments from the deists? Hearing now on roll call, please.
Mr. Flag?
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Deb?
Yes.
Chair Sirogi?
Yes. Next, TV LLC, file number 23-PB-02-MSV.
Same people.
Same group. Okay. Mr. Deb made a motion?
Mr. Deb thinks he's, uh, Mr. Scobbo.
Well, you know, he is sitting in his seat, so he, he's kinda challenging Mr. Scobbo.
Channeling him.
Well, that's true. Yeah, you're too audible, because, yeah. No, because Mr. Scobbo was very, we never could hear him. Right.
All right, we have a, we have a motion, we have a second.
Sure, second.
Thank you. Comments from the deists? Roll call, please.
Mr. Flag?
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Deb?
Yes.
Chair Sirogi?
Yes, we do not have any planning board business. We don't have ordinances for consideration. Now, we will go to business from the floor for matters not on this evening's agenda. If there's anything you'd like to come up to address to the board, obviously, please refrain from anything directly or indirectly warehouses, because as you see, we have a couple of active applications going on. And please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Richard Undereko, 921 Lewis Street, from the borough of Manville. I drove all the way here tonight, I didn't know, so I figured I'm gonna comment anyway, right? So, planning boards are difficult to serve on, and a lot of you are volunteers up there that don't get paid. And I just wanna say thank you from a neighboring borough for what it is you do, because I get it. And, um, driving here tonight, coming in on the driveway, Mayor, I'd like to give you some credit, and the, the American flags really brought a tear to my eye. It's a great time to be in this country, to be an American, and I love what you did with all those flags in your parking lot. So keep up the good work, guys. I'll be back in May. Have a good evening.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Any of you? Nope, all heads shaking?
You here for the pizza?
Yeah. You, you changed your shirt from earlier.
Okay, so with that, well, do we, do we still have anything on the agenda for next week?
So, nothing for April 10th and also the 24th of...
24th is still up in the air in terms of the possibility of master plan.
Okay.
Okay, you wanna hold on to that?
I'll just hold on.
So then can I have a motion to cancel the April 10, 2025 meeting?
So moved.
Okay. Comments? Anyone really is objecting to canceling the meeting?
Sorry, who was the motion?
The mayor.
The mayor and the, and the board secretary.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Flag?
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Deb?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Committee in the Ponty?
Yes.
Mayor Chigarelli?
Yes.
Chair Sirogi?
Yes, and with that, I will entertain a motion of adjournment.
So moved.
All in favor? All right, thank you all, and we're adjourned.